Good morning, it's June 13th, it's 10 o'clock and it's still raining but hopefully it's going to get better. Please note the record that all three county commissioners are here. We will ask for a moment of silent meditation and pledge of the flag. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everyone. It's time for our county administrator to do consent and approvals.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Three honorations for 1,038, 34872. Vouchers for General County, 325, 79090. Coal Severance, 50,000, 37812, 911, 1,007, 8491. Chestnut Ridge Park, 3,007, 6491. Camp Muffley, 7,003, 8947. Mason Dixon Park, 4,001, 0519. Cessers valuation, $747. Morgantown Industrial Tiff, 11,009, 0664. Purchasing card vouchers for General County Fund, 47,50565. Magistrate Court, $58,95. 911, 1,00435. Home confinement, $7,09983. Chestnut Ridge Park, 40745. Camp Muffley, 21065. Mason Dixon Park, 9524. Cessers valuation, 82130 for a voucher total of $463,521. We have in-house budget revisions to approve for law enforcement, service of process, jail reimbursable, jail non-reimbursable, and emergency management. Position vacancies for boards and authorities, the Western Board of Zoning Appeals, the Planning Commission, River Road Public Service District, the Mon County Solid Waste Authority, and the Mon County Development Authority. Fiduciary orders for June 13th, 2018. And we have a first quarter file status report for fiduciary Commissioner Cindy Van Stauber.
Move for approval?
Second.
Well, the move in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes, great. Do we have any introduction of any new employees or personnel change? Okay. Seeing none, we will do for comments from the public. Is there anyone here from the public who'd like to speak?
Can I possibly say something?
Sure, go ahead.
I know normally I would say something under elected official comment, but...
Sure, go ahead.
That's after your new business.
Yes.
And I wanted to just bring to your attention a couple of things. I noticed on the agenda today, you are discussing a new policy regarding our health insurance, which will go into effect August the 1st. And I've not had an opportunity to have a conversation with the three of you about that as to how that is going to affect our employees over the age of 65. And so I would ask that I be included on a work session at some point so that we could discuss that a little bit further. The second issue has to do with the potential employee raises that you may issue for the next fiscal year. And I just ask that you consider doing that prior to July 1st so that those employees and the department heads can make those effective July 1st. It's a little bit difficult for the departments and for our finance department to put that into place when you do it in the middle of a fiscal year. So that was my two things. Thank you.
Thank you. Since it'll be on the new business, we can discuss, we'll have a discussion and that's fine. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak? Okay. At this time, we closed the comments from the public. We will now have the Honorable Colleen Kuhn.
I have several requests for reimbursements. The first one is the JJDP grant, Voices 2 program, in the amount of $2,178.84. The next one is another JJDP grant. This is the DMC in the amount of $3,623.75. I have the Governor's Highway Safety Program, Click It or Ticket, in the amount of $2,793.72. Another Governor's Highway Safety Program, distracted driving, in the amount of $384.8. Impaired driving, $6,055.27. I have the Day Report Center grant in the amount of $15,119.48. And finally, the VOCA grant in the amount of $6,603.5.
I move that the President sign the grants?
Second.
The proper move in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It passes. Okay. Sheriff Perry Palmer in the presentation of the 2,000 delinquent tax list.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you for not making three coffees.
Yes.
This is just the presentation of the 2017 delinquent real estate and personal property tax. And we are asking the commission to certify the list for the county clerk. If you have any questions, my chief tax deputy here should be glad to answer.
I don't have any questions.
Can I, can I?
Yes, sure.
I just wanted to let you know that that did run in the newspaper two weeks ago according to state code. And it costs us about $31,000 to publish that list. There were about 23,500 names included on that list. So we have been researching, doing a second half reminder notice. And I think that we'll be able to do that because a lot of those names are people that just forgot to pay the second half. They remember to pay the first half when they get that bill in July and then they just never think about it again. So we've gotten a cost estimate and it will probably be around $10,000 to send out the second half reminder as compared to the $30,000 that we've just spent to publish that in the paper. Now, we'll still have to always do the publication list because that's in state code, but if we could cut down on the names. If you notice, it was actually two inserts this year.
Yes.
It wasn't just one. They actually had two inserts, so.
And just for clarification, this is 2017. And your collection, your ultimate collection on the real estate is?
Oh.
Percentage, yeah.
Oh, percentage?
Yes.
At this point, I don't have those numbers. I have the personal property, but, and I don't know why I didn't bring those up with me. If you will give me five minutes, I will go downstairs and get the numbers and I'll bring those back up. I just walked off without them.
Okay. I'm just curious what the percentage was. I mean, is on the real estate, you eventually are going to collect everything.
We'll collect 100% of that.
Right. That was my point.
That's what we wanted to hear.
Oh, okay. Yes, we will collect 100% of that. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you. Presented, do I have a motion to accept it?
Second, or a motion to accept?
Second.
The proper move in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
And I will bring those numbers up.
Okay. We now are under correspondence. Do we have any correspondence?
Yeah, I just have one item. We had a vacancy left from, with the Transit Authority because of the passing away of David Flynn, who was one of the appointees. And we received a letter from Dave Bruffy, who's the general manager of Mountain Line Transit Authority, asking that Mr. Ron Bane be appointed, or to be considered for appointment. Ron is already serving on the transportation, or the Transit Authority on behalf of the city, but he shared with me that he has moved out of the city and he still wants to serve on the Transit Authority. So he has submitted a copy of his resignation letter that he will be submitting to the city if you all decide to appoint him as a county commission appointee instead of a city appointee. And I have an application for him as per our procedures.
So he's completed an application and sent it back?
Yes.
So I would move that we accept, or make the recommendation that Ron Bane be appointed to the, what's it called?
Transit Authority.
Transit Authority as the county representative pending his resignation as the city representative.
Second.
Okay. And I believe there's also, it's been properly moved in second. I also believe there's a endorsement letter from Dave Bruffy. He would like to keep him on.
Yeah, that's what I said first.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was thinking, okay.
Very capable individual. He's providing that service.
Yes.
He may not be able to keep providing that service and I would like to fill this, we can't fill a position. I mean, we can't replace the person that passed away, but he's a very capable individual and would add a lot of value to the Transit Authority.
Good. It's been properly moved in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It passes. Good. Is there any other correspondence?
No.
Seeing none, we're going to go into unfinished business. Is there any unfinished business?
No.
Okay. But we have a lot of new business. Here we go. First, letter A. Consider approval of local service agreements with CityNet for 100 MBPS private connection for the Mon County Courthouse and a 100 MBPS public access connection to the Mon Gay County Justice Center as recommended by the county IT staff.
Move for approval?
Second.
Properly moved in second. Any discussion? Really, it needs none, I don't think.
No, this, these, these lines are replacing, and we have a representative from our IT department, Jeff, if you want to explain.
Yeah, that would be good.
Essentially, this is replacing a service that's going to expire as of 6/30.
Absolutely. Yeah, we're going to enter a new contract July 1st if we stay where we are with a, with the state contract agreement. And thus, we went on our own to find another third-party provider that could provide this connection to, from us to WBNet at a cheaper cost.
Okay. It's been properly moved in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And thank you for your help on that. Okay. Consider approval of requisition number five for the Morgantown Industrial Park Phase Two Project Fund.
Yes, I have received a requisition from Enroute Properties, $20,000. And those funds will be to reimburse Enroute for, or for Adrian expenses, Adrian Enterprises for project management costs in the industrial park.
Move for approval?
Second.
Properly moved in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, passes. Consideration of approving the multi-jurisdictional hazard mitigation plan update adoption resolution for Mon County as requested by Region Six Planning and Development Council.
This is continuation of their mitigation and it's just something that we have to do every year just to keep participating in the mitigation plan.
Move for approval?
Second.
Properly moved in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. We have a request from the Miss West Virginia Scholarship Organization for $1,500 in funding and we have a letter with that. How would you like to proceed?
Have the letter read?
Oh, you want the letter?
Oh, yeah. I'm sorry. And Ms. Summers would be here, but due to the storm last night, she has no power and she, she texts me. She has no power and she apologizes for that.
Dear President Bloom, once again, the Miss West Virginia Scholarship Organization is hosting the 2018 Miss West Virginia Pageant in Morgantown at the Metropolitan Theater in downtown Morgantown, June 28th through June 30th. Our organization attracts the best and brightest women in our state, young women in our state. Each year, local Miss West Virginia and Miss West Virginians, Virginia's outstanding teen representatives compete for over $36,000 in cash and $100,000 in available in-kind scholarships. This annual event increases tourism in our area and introduces out-of-state attendees to the great amenities Montague County and the city of Morgantown have to offer. As a nonprofit 501(c)(4) organization, of course, funding is always a concern. Therefore, we are asking you to please consider monetary support in amount of $1,500 for our organization. In return for your investment in our program, you will receive acknowledged, onstage acknowledgement, commercial spots during three-night webcast, logo, link on the Miss West Virginia website, and complimentary tickets to the competitions and finals.
This is consistent with support we provided last year.
Yes.
Yes.
And in the past, yes.
That would move.
Move for approval?
Second.
It's been properly moved in second. I wish she was here because Leah Summers, I just want to say, made the Who's Who in West Virginia Business Magazine saying recipe for success, brains, beauty, and grit, and talks about the pageant. So again, congratulate her for that. So it's been properly moved in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It passes. Okay. E, consideration of adopting a policy that limits new benefit-eligible employees hired with a starting date of August 1st, 2018, or after to the high deductible plan with health savings account as part of the county's group health insurance. And we have a motion, second, and then discussion.
Move for approval?
Second.
The prop moved in second. Would we like to have discussion and would anyone like to answer the questions and concerns that were brought?
Well, we did have a conversation with the, our insurance agent as to whether, whether we should, and again, this is just the first year we're going in and trying this to try to move more people to our high deductible plan. I think that if we make exceptions, we put ourselves in a situation where we're going to be more open to charges of discrimination rather than treating all the employees the same. We did address the Medicare issue. If they're over 65 and they're not enrolled in Medicare, they can still participate in the health savings account and there is no issue. The only problem comes if they are enrolled in Medicare, they cannot participate in the health savings account. But they do have Medicare to supplement their insurance. So we had, we had heard of concerns about this and we did meet with the insurance agents to address it. And we feel that the path forward for now is to continue with our plan to limit new employees to the high deductible plan. Again, this, this plan saves the county, the taxpayers, a lot of money and it is, it's a best value. The value that you get for your small premium that you pay for this is, if you're willing to be a better consumer, is a lot better than the value that you get from paying a higher premium and being in our, our 400 deductible plan. So it'd be my recommendation that we accept the, what we had already, what we have tabled. I would like to make a notation or a adjustment to the motion. We still need, I think we still need to make it formal that we are going to fund the HSAs because we haven't formally done that. So I want to make sure that we acknowledge publicly that we are going to fund the county employees as SHAs that participate in this plan at the $2,000 level. And I believe we also decided we are going to do that quarterly.
Yes. Would you set that as a friendly amendment?
Yes.
Okay. So we have that in the motion and I agree with Commissioner Secora. We did ask the question and the concern from the insurance company is even though we may try and deal with them on an individual basis, it may be interpreted that the first time we say no, it is discrimination. So they all strongly recommended that we continue with this policy. And if I can remind the community, two years ago, we started to move in this direction. We could have done it last year and we chose not to because we wanted to see how the, the plan worked, but this was the direction we were moving. So we are just continuing the plan of action.
And overall, we were trying to bend the curve of ever-increasing healthcare cost. So we went from a plan of possibly having an increase of about $500,000 this year that we're actually be getting a cost savings of about 140?
140,000.
140,000 due to this and other moves that we've made with our insurance. So we're still providing the overall best value. This, this plan blows away any other plans that are available out there for any other entities that I've ever been involved with. So it's still a premium insurance, but it's also a great value to the taxpayers.
We also said we were going to consider passing the premiums on to the other plan, but we did not. We are, we're continuing our direction and this, this helps us resolve all those issues.
Yeah, that's an important thing that all, all the employee premiums will still remain the same. So that's two years in a row. Actually, premiums went down last year. So two years in a row where their premiums have stayed the same or, or lessened.
But the costs have gone up and the county has taken it. Okay. You have any?
I'm fine.
Okay. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. All those against? Okay, making sure so.
I'm sorry, I didn't say.
That's all right. I just wanted to make sure there was no.
I was moving on to the next thing. Aye.
Yeah. I wanted to make sure, I wanted to give you that opportunity. Okay. To consider authorizing the commission president to sign an amended petition to include the CNX Land LLC as a second party in condemnation proceedings previously filed against Consol Mining Company for public purposes and designation of .88 acres, tax map number nine, parcel number two, Bramville District in Mon County for the purposes of implementing a project plan pursuant to the West Virginia Tiff Act.
I move that we authorize the President to sign the amendment.
Second.
Okay, proper move in second. Does anyone need to explain or basically, we had done the first part, we just learned that this is, there was a second part.
There was another entity involved that we have to include.
And that's what we're doing. So we're just adding the second entity. Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. It passes. Okay. Reports from elected officials? Sean? Oh, wait. I mean, sorry, are there any? Yeah, did you want to just say, I saw you run back, so I apologize. Yeah.
Sorry, Kelly, I really didn't mean to put you on the spot.
No, you would think after 10 years that I would have written that. So the delinquent amount for real estate taxes is $5,663,085.20. And for personal property, it's $2,635,234.87, which is about 10% of total taxes to be collected. The total between the two was $8,298,320.7.
And you said the right words, "to be collected." This is a.
Correct.
That was my point. I didn't want people to think that this is taxes that aren't paid.
Oh, yes.
These taxes are eventually paid.
Absolutely.
Through your office's efforts. I didn't want people to think that other citizens were getting away without paying taxes.
And I think the Sheriff Palmer mentioned that it's like 100% for the real estate
and almost like 98-plus percent for the other. So I want people to understand, we will be getting that fund, it's just a matter of time.
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. Anyone else, elected officials? Okay, seeing none, do we have reports from the county commissioners?
Yes, I was on vacation, so I don't have a lot to report, though, getting back into the office this week. We've got another couple of weeks of full slate. We had a commission meeting on Monday and then today we have a full slate and tonight we have our District Four caucus meeting. Thursday, I have the Red Team meeting and the Development Authority meeting. So, and then next week gets into a whole other, very busy week. I would like to make a comment about, the, the last time I was here in commission, so that was two weeks ago, I got a call from the citizen that had a concern. I didn't know what the issue was. I called and, you know, sometimes we can't solve all the problems, but at least we can listen. And this individual had a concern with his parents' house where they had a black mold problem. They're well, both individuals are way into their 80s. They were told by insurance it wouldn't take care. Again, they just needed somebody to talk to and maybe, maybe toss some ideas to them that they can actually pursue. So I did that. I reached out and as you guys are aware, Joe Statler and Ron Lidle do a lot of work for flood victims and they're very aware of this. The individuals were told that it was a French drain problem. And so they were looking at, they were on fixed income, they were looking at probably some substantial cost. But I asked, Joe gave me a lot of advice, which I passed on. I asked our health department because I know we have that fund, but that's for septic system failures. And they said, well, they'll go take a look because if it somehow has anything to do with that. So they went out and investigated and, and it just made the, the couple feel good that, you know, that, you know, that we could at least were concerned and we were putting resources to at least giving them options. I was on my way to the airport on that Friday and I got a text from Ron Lidle that him and Joe Statler had just left the house and they fixed the issue. It was a drain pipe, their gutters weren't cleaned out and it was dropping out and that was what was leaking into the house. So they gave them, they fixed it for them. Again, we hope it's a, it's a fix and gave them some suggestions to make sure that it stays clean. And, you know, the people were just thrilled. So anyhow, I just wanted to pass that along to the wonderful work that, you know, Joe, Ronnie, and a host of individuals. That's why I even pursued asking around because I know we have so many good organizations in this county that do wonderful work for people in need. My first thought was to bounce it off you guys, you know, for other organizations that are out there that might do work for the elderly, may do these type of things. I didn't even get that far because the first couple texts and they, they went and took care of it. So I just wanted to make sure I give recognition where recognition is due to, one, the health department for acting on it and at least in interviewing the people and giving them suggestions about cleaning up the black mold. And delegate Statler and Ron Lidle for actually stopping by and checking on the people and helping them.
It just shows we have a community with heart.
Yes.
It really does.
That's right. Thank you.
Yesterday, the meeting, Sean mentioned we had a meeting. It was with our fiduciary commissioners just to, to listen to the, the process that we sometimes have to listen with regards to probate. Last night, I did go to younger 4-H camp. Dr. Gee was present, got to speak with him briefly, but it was really very inspirational seeing how many children there were. It's, the, the sad thing is, it's taking almost an hour and a half to an hour and 45 minutes to feed them all because we have so many. So perhaps maybe that may be in the future, we might be looking toward a third camp. I'm not sure, but I will probably make Becca's day when I start that discussion with her. Today, I got up early. I usually don't attend meetings in the morning, but a old friend of mine had asked me to address the North Morgantown Rotary Club. They meet at 7:00 in the morning. I had told him jokingly, I didn't retire from dentistry to go to work earlier than what I had done dentistry, but for this group, I, I did go and address them. I think my remarks, I hope they were well-received there. We all have a meeting that we're going to tonight, you know, that I'm certain that Tom will speak on Thursday. I have the Metropolitan Theater Board. And I think Monday, we should at least note, is the groundbreaking for the Mon Gay County Extension and 4-H Center. That will be at Myland Park. And we are expecting the head of commission, or excuse me, the head of extension, we're expecting Mr. Kent Lanehart. I know Becca will be there. I did personally invite Dr. Gee to come, so hopefully, maybe he'll be able to attend as well and we'll see, see everybody at that particular event. Also, later in the afternoon, I have a landmark commission meeting. And Tuesday is the meeting for the, for this particular project, the County Extension and 4-H Center, which is meeting every two weeks. Mr. Doyle will be attending with me. And lastly, after that, will be the Fair Board meeting. So looks like we'll have some meetings in the future.
Thank you. Yesterday, I represented the county at The Drive, which is the Mon County nonprofit multidisciplinary group whose mission is to create awareness of the increasing problems of opioid addiction in our community. And I'll say, it was excellent. I mean, I want you to know that we had a lot of different representatives in the community, but also all the different police forces there. And we're actually finally moving forward with a plan and a suggestion, which is basically the number one thing, which is communication. Communication to the public and communication among all the groups that are meeting. And I'll give a perfect example. Health Right first time showed up and they had mentioned that they had all the NarCam, all these NarCam units and for several months and said, no one's been picking them up. Well, the problem was whoever gave them didn't tell the police departments that they were available. So immediately, I know Perry, our group, when we were out of them, the three police departments went down there and got the NarCam stuff. So that's what this group is now going to do, start communicating and working forward. And I really think that's great. I also want to hand out, the other thing is they have cards that I know our sheriff department has in the city that when someone has an overdose, they give them a card. And one of the ideas that came out, and again, it's thinking out of the box, was there were several legislators there and I proposed the possibility of, similar to with a mental hygiene, if we disperse the NarCam, we give then, the law would be in the county because we're doing it for free. It'd be one of three options. Take them to the hospital, get checked out, pass on to an individual who's 21 or older, or some other option where we have a peer group and so on that they immediately go to. The legislators liked that idea and think, well, why can't we make it statewide to look at that kind of option? So, we're looking and, it really was a great meeting, so I'll say it with that and, and I'm looking forward to more meetings along that line. They did warn us that there is a crisis going on. I guess there's a lot of crystal meth going out in the community and wanted to warn the people, there's a real problem that, besides the opioids. So, it's another serious, and it's in the Western County coming this way. The next thing I want to say is Saturday again is the food drive at Clay Patel. We appreciate we're going to go out there and from 9:00 to 11:00. Let's see. I do want to state because of transparency, I was invited yesterday and went out for a tour of Haymaker Village, but we did get permission before from the landowners. So, if anyone says we walked, Perry, just want you to know in case you get a phone call, we did have permission to go out and we did take a tour. And I think it was important because Mark Vassitis wanted me to see it and I know he's making some tours, but I did want the public to know I did go out there with him, so in case anyone had a concern. The final thing I, I want to bring up and it was yesterday, and this has been going on and I'm not sure how to address it, but I want to throw it out and maybe it's something that the three of us need to put on a work session. I got a call from a community that's been having trouble with Republic and not picking up the trash. And it's over by the Cheat Lake area, Barkley Road, there's a division out there. And it's been three weeks that haven't been picked up. They've made all the phone calls and now they're having a rat problem, a problem of animals coming in. So, I called the health department thinking that was the thing I should do. And John Worth called me back and was very disappointed that through three times not getting callbacks, when he finally got ahold of someone, he was not permitted to talk to anyone because he didn't own any property out there. So, I have a concern if our own health department cannot call Republic to say, we have a problem, we have a concern. So, I didn't know how to address it and I thought we could put it on the work session, but that seriously bothers me. Every phone call, the number I have goes directly to a, a national call. And when they finally got ahold of someone, he was not permitted to talk to anyone as the health department asking just, we have a problem. So, it's just something that concerns me and I know you've gotten other calls about Republic, but this bothers me that they're not even answering.
Who is the entity that has a contract with Republic?
Well, it's actually, I think the PSC.
That's the route that they have, they own that route out there.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. And I don't know, Perry, if you've got any other, but I know it's a concern that we need to address and it's not you to address and, you know, and again, the neighbors are more than willing to do their part, but it's not getting picked up whether, and they admitted they don't have enough drivers or if the road is really bad, but that's besides the point. The point is we have a problem out there and it could happen in other areas. So, it's just something I'd like to put on the work session. So, maybe we call them in so we have an actual process to, to deal with that because that, that concerned me. Before we, are we going to have moves to go in executive session or not? Do we have to go in? Okay, I thought you said that we had, oh, never mind. Okay.
Army this evening.
Oh, the meeting this evening is at 6:00, Fairmont Election Center, Marion County Election Center, if we can find the address. But the key being there is we're going to be able to find from the DOH and this is the key. How far we're behind now, what do we need to get to get back in a routine? That's the amount of money we're going to need and that's what we're going to ask North Central Caucus to go down there and request those funds for a three-year period so we can get back. Sean always said, let's get back into that routine of the maintenance.[1776.26]